All right. Thank you, everyone, for sticking with us. It is 6:41 PM on Tuesday, April 26, 2022, and you are at a common council of the City of Wausau meeting. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. How do you want to do this? All right, the clerical telling.
We have 11 members present.
Amazing. Thank you. All right, the first item on our agenda is a policing task force preliminary, just kidding, proclamations. I don't think we have anybody here to receive the proclamations, so I will just note that we have Aging and Disability Resource Center Month, Mental Health Awareness Month, Provider Appreciation Day, and Workers Memorial Day. Thank you for everyone doing all the amazing things in our community. Next item on our agenda is our policing task force preliminary recommendations with Chair Robinson and me, so I'm going to race down there and help give this presentation. It won't be on that one, but...
Well, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present the work of the Wausau Policing Task Force, and I'd like to thank the council for authorizing the creation of the task force and giving us the direction relative to the tasks at hand, and we're going to, I think, because it was a product of the council's not spend a lot of time on what you had charged us with, but rather get into our processes, our findings, and ultimately our recommendations, and then we'll talk then about the next steps with it. So, first of all, I'd like to just acknowledge the contributions of many people in the community when we set out. We wanted to try to dig down into the policies, procedures, and perceptions of the public, and to look at the actual practices as it relates to policing, hiring, firing, disciplinary actions, use of force, how things are tracked, and we had put the police department under a microscope, and they performed very well. I'd like to thank Chief Levin, Matt Barnes, Ben Graham, others in the department who were instrumental in providing us background information and sharing with us those policies and procedures. We got two thumb drives, 23 meetings to date of that group where we learned a lot. We reached out to the Sheriff's Department, DA's office, people in the mental health community, and they shared their observations and perspectives as well, and I think we learned a lot, and my appreciation for the, appreciation for the department grew, and we'd just like to reflect that when you're under a microscope, under the pressure, they performed well and provided us very valuable and objective information in helping us develop our recommendations.
All right, so we're going to zoom through a little bit of this because you were all kind of a part of the creation of this task force. But basically, what we wanted to do is we wanted to make sure that we were being responsive to the comments and suggestions of our community without being reactive. We wanted to make sure that the community understood our governing policies, what we actually have as far as policing policy and tactics and practices, but we also have a vision of excellence for our police department. If you've ever gone over there, you'll see written right there on the wall that the Wausau Police Department's visionary goal is to be regarded as the standard of excellence in policing. And obviously, we can only get there by doing this every day and working that muscle. So you know this kind of timeline here. I don't know if there's anything you want to specifically highlight, and I think you also know about our citizen oversight that we already have in place. We have our Police and Fire Commission, five civilian members appointed by me and approved by you. We have our Public Health and Safety Committee, which is made up of five of you, then that you have oversight of the policy recommendations for the administration and the Police and Fire Department, and then, obviously, me. I'm day-to-day oversight and management.
So when we, we sat out, set out to try to be deliberative with no preconceived ideas, we wanted to take a deep dive into the police department's policies and practices, and again, we spent a lot of time looking at those. Why, you know, we wanted to look at what the community's needs were. Were you tasked with looking at mental health, homelessness, social issues, and other things that affect policing? And then, who are we, who are we missing? You know, we wanted to look at what data gaps there were, and there continue to be some, and what sort of needs are there when we, as we try to address policing in this community?
And obviously, you helped us authorize this, so the task force duties and responsibilities. There are 13 tasks that were outlined in that authorizing resolution, and everything from assess and analyze our current policies to evaluating the role of citizen oversight to participating in community engagement activities and dialogues to make sure that we're all meeting each other's expectations. Here are the folks that are on there. Chair Robinson, Alder Peckham, and two members of our Police and Fire Commission, Michael Loy and William Harris, along with three citizen members, Kaylee McCully, Sarah Schneck, and Mike Klemm-North. They all had broad background and brought really interesting, different qualities to our discussions. There's a bunch of meetings.
So again, we started meeting in September of 2000 and went virtual for a while and came back to in person and went back to virtual, and now we're in person. But we spent a lot of time looking not only at what the policies and practices are, we tried to look at what were the standards of, your best management practices. We looked at the President Obama's Task Force on 21st Century Policing. We looked at the Wisconsin Professional Police Association's Blueprint for Change. We looked at the Speaker's Task Force on Racial Disparities and others for recommendations on how you can improve policing in the community. We also spent a lot of time working with Wisconsin Institute for Public Policy and Service, WHIPS, on engaging the public, and we did that in a number of ways. We started out with having seven listening sessions in the spring of last year, some virtual, some in person. We tried to tailor some to certain segments of the community. We wanted to gather a general feeling of where policing was so we could design a survey. So the listening sessions generated a number of responses and concerns. We incorporated those into a survey that was mailed out to 5,000-plus people and made available online. We had 1,231 responses to that report. From that, that information, we found that there were disparate differences of opinion relative to policing and responses based upon a number of factors, including race, income, mental health status, arrest record, and others. We wanted to dig down into that a little bit more, so we created a series of focus groups to sit down and try to explore those. In addition, two of those, we had seven focus groups. Two of those were made up of representatives from the police department to get their perspective and feelings as well, so that we could get some, you know, their, their input into the process. And that all led, all of the information that we learned, along with the input from the public, led to our reaching certain findings.
Sure. Do you want me to start?
Go ahead.
Do you want to? So we, we had a series of findings. We put them into buckets, and obviously, one of the things that we were charged with twice in our authorizing resolution was looking into systemic racism, and we did not find evidence of systemic racism, and we found that the majority of respondents are satisfied with Wausau Police Department performance. We did, however, find that the folks that were young, non-white, non-heterosexual, non-homeowners expressed more negativity about law enforcement, and that was something we wanted to dig into a little bit more, especially as it relates to those focus groups, so that we could get more information about what folks needed from us.
Then we asked the question, do you feel more or less safe than you did a year ago? And there was a 50-50 split. We also found that mental health and addiction resources were a top priority. One of the things we encouraged all of our task force members to do is to do ride-alongs, and I did two of those, and within the first half hour of both of those ride-alongs, you were dealing with mental health or substance abuse issues within the general public. And so your officers are facing that on a daily basis, and it's, you know, it was important for us to, to realize that, and we focused on that in our, in our findings and recommendations. And then we, we also, the public identified recruiting quality candidates is critical, and I will, I will say this, is that, you know, my appreciation for the Wausau Police Department has grown tremendously, as I reference, and it's based upon character. When you talk to the leadership, they talk about how important character is at the time of selection, how important it is throughout their advancement in their career, and I think it emanates from the top, and you've got a very professional, very caring, very committed police department that has been a leader on issues like homelessness and, and, you know, with Officer Lemerod and, and others, and we're very impressed with that, that coming out and just being important. And also, when we started looking at those various studies on the national level, state level, and others, and you started looking at use of body cameras, having mental health services available, a number of the other recommendations, the pillars that were identified in the President's Commission on 21st Century Policing, Wausau's doing that. Wausau's ahead in many of those areas in terms of taking a leadership role, and again, that's a tribute to this council for funding it, for the department, for advocating for, to the community for supporting that. And one of the things we did do is we wanted to find out where people are getting their information. This, this stage, day and age of multiple media sources, and everybody's got their own source of truth, we wanted to get a better feel of where people get that information. And I encourage you to look at the appendixes to the report because they, they show where they, they get it, and it's a divergent. You need to be multi-media, multicultural in how you approach it. They don't get it from a single source. They do rely on local TV stations. Wausau Daily Herald's reliance for news is diminished significantly from the days that I was in this, this body years ago, but it just shows that you need to think about how you communicate and where people get their information, social media, friends, et cetera. And then, a majority of residents rated their experiences with the police department as very favorable, and there were a number of surveys.
And if it sounds like we're going fast, we are. We're up against a time crunch for Mr. Robinson, who has county board, so we're gonna, we're gonna go through this pretty quickly, but this won't be the first, this won't be the only time you see it, and for many of you, it's not the first time either. So issues and recommendations. We put these all in buckets of what we thought were the most important findings that we fared it out. Number one, mental health and human services. We want to make sure that officers have the resources they need to respond appropriately and safely to people with mental illness. We also have officer wellness as a top priority, so we want to make sure that we're investing in officers' mental and physical health to improve resiliency and overall well-being of the department, and I don't know why I'm just reading off this thing. We also care about cultural competency. That was one thing that we heard over and over, especially when we had our focus group with the Klan leaders, the Hmong Klan leaders. We heard that it was really important to folks, and we know this to be true, that we are making, that we are appropriately interacting with folks, and we understand some of the, some of the maybe issues that come up that we may, might not understand as non-members of that community. And then, lastly, community engagement, super important. We want to continue proactively creating opportunities for us to engage with the community and our police department, so that we create trust and build these relationships with folks.
So in terms of individual recommendations, we're calling for the expansion of the Crisis Assessment Response Team. Currently, we have a five-day-a-week, eight-to-five mental health services that, that are available to the police department. We'd like to expand that into about 16 hours a day into the weekend, and so we're calling for the expansion of the cart. The, the work of Officer Lemerod was, I think, outstanding in the homeless outreach services and working with them, but that doesn't take the services of a sworn officer, and we're recommending that we embed a social worker within the police department to work with that population. We're going to request that North Central Health Care continue to pursue strategies for community-based care, case management services. One of the things that's, that's frustrating is that people seem to revolve or keep revolving through the system. We, we, you know, they, they have issues, mental health issues, behavioral health issues. They get incarcerated, they, they may get treatment, and they go back on the street, and they come, they start the cycle all over again. It is critical that we have somebody watching and working with them and making sure that they're accessing the necessary services, and it's a critical need to support that, you know, the personal needs, the mental health needs, the substance abuse needs of those individuals, so that we can stop that revolving door from, from going forward.
Right. Some of these issues are complex, and they take time and multiple efforts to, to solve, if that's possible.
And we're also requesting that the legislature modify 5115, and the statute is currently under, when you make an, a arrest or detain an individual for crisis services, the law enforcement has, takes somebody to North Central Health Care, but the roles and the responsibilities of the police department is not well-defined. It leads to confusion. It leaves a significant staff being committed to the, the process, the involuntary or voluntary commitment process. There's a need to clarify the roles of what the expectations of law enforcement is, what are the expectations of the crisis management service providers, and that's going to require legislative action to do that. And, you know, is we hopefully bring some of those services closer to home through the expansion of services in North Central. We won't have as many issues with Winnebago, but it is still an issue that needs to be addressed. And finally, we, in this area, we identified Metro Ride as an important provider of transportation for the homeless, to making sure that they can get to their appointments, that we serve those people in need, that we try to address those. So we challenge the Metro Board to, to look at how those transportation services can, can address some of those needs. In terms of officer wellness and training, one of the things that we want to make sure is that, you know, the officers are under tremendous pressure, and they deal with very tragic and very heart-wrenching situations, whether it's rape, domestic abuse, murder, or, or other battery. They need, we need to make sure that they have the services and the mental health support that they need for them to do their job, and we're making a recommendation that those services be provided by a qualified provider, and that they be provided free of, free of costs with no copays and deductibles. It is important that they, that we support those officers and their mental health needs as much as we do the community and the mental health concerns that they have.
I know, sorry. I know there's an example I keep using, but I, during this, this whole process, I talked to the mayor, who was mayor at the time of Parkland, Florida, who was mayor during the terrible school shooting, and she said that one of the number-one things that she did that was really important was to ensure that the officers who were responding to that situation had access to mental health services, specific, that, who already understood what officers go through, so they don't have to re-explain their trauma over and over again. They can just get to fixing it. They don't have to explain what their job is because these people already know.
We're also recommending annual cultural awareness training for officers. As we continue to become a more diverse community, we need to make sure that we're aware of that, those cultural differences, and to expand and invest in mental health training resources for officers, so that we continue to support them as they go out and try to do their job. In terms of cultural competency, funding is going to be, you know, we want to make sure that interpreters' services are available, and I know the police department is using them right now, and, and proactively allowing the, the public know that it's available. And we also encourage the department to learn certain basic phrases in, in various languages, whether it's Pashtun or, or some of the other, you know, Spanish, or, or some of the other languages, as our community becomes more diverse. In the context of community engagement, we want to initiate formal, ongoing dialogue with groups that are, you know, BIPOC, Hispanic Hmong, LGBTQ, New Refugees, and other groups. It is important that we understand their cultural background, and they understand the laws of the state, and you do that through a dialogue, and the expansion of the neighbor-to-neighbor program, but a little bit more focused with those groups with a hope that we can get a better understanding and dialogue, so we have a better understanding of what the premises are and the cultural differences are, and not to say that we won't, we'll differ, differentiate in our treatment of people with domestic abuse situations based upon their cultural background, but there's, there's a better awareness and understanding of why we are doing certain things. We want to develop a multicultural, multimedia communication policy. Again, where do people get their information? And it also needs to be relative to that person's background, and, and it needs to be thought through, and how can we address some of those cultural differences? We want to continue partnerships with research organizations to collect information on social justice issues and the criminal justice system. Did we fully investigate systemic racism? No. Do we have all the information? No. Will there be new information tomorrow? Yes. Can we, could we do a better job? Yes, but with limited resources and others. It's just important that we recognize that it wasn't, it did not manifest itself, but that we need to make sure that we stay on top of the latest in research, and we continue to, to look for ways to make ourselves and, and the department better. We want to make sure that we conduct a public service campaign on interacting with law enforcement to achieve positive outcomes, talking about not only the roles of law enforcement in that, in that situation, but the general public, create expectations that, that this is how you should, you should behave, and, and try to have a message out there so that there are not the, the situations that happened in Grand Rapids, Michigan, and, and others. And do, we also support the conducting of a regular periodic community survey, like the one that we conducted with, through WHIPS, similar to what the Wisconsin Professional Police Association does on a statewide basis, but when you look at that survey, there's maybe three people from this community or this county that might be interviewed. It's not very reflective, so we need to make sure that there's an ongoing way to measure what the public's perception is of policing in this community.
So we prioritize the list for you. So obviously, the number-one recommendation is expansion of Crisis Assessment Response Team. We think that's really important, but we also think that outreach services with a social worker is super important, too. So I will make sure that you all get a list of this prior, the priorities, but these are all what we just went through, only in the order in which we thought they were the most important. And I think, lastly, we know that we can't do this alone. You know, sometimes when people say they called the police and they responded, we find out that it wasn't the Wausau Police, it was maybe the Sheriff's Department, or maybe they were talking to somebody completely different. I go on plenty of wild goose chases trying to hunt things down, only to find out that somebody has responded that wasn't Wausau at all. So we know that we can't do this alone, and it includes all of the justice system, including the state, including our county friends, and also North Central Health Care. We really do need their assistance, too. So we took all of our recommendations, and we said, you know, this is where we are going to need support from the county. We're going to need support from North Central Health Care, and we're going to need support from the public. So this is, again, another way to look at the recommendations that we suggested, but also pointing out that it's not just us. We need assistance from the rest of the, our justice system.
So that's a very quick summation of what we've done. I want to just share with you some observations and outline the next steps. Again, the observations that I have character in quality matter, and I think we're fortunate. Professionalism starts at the top and carries throughout the organization. Again, I think we've got exceptional leadership. I think we learned that the police department supports the community. If you were at the Black Lives Matter, Matter of March, and you found that the law enforcement was there handing out water bottles and being very supportive, and in turn, the police, the community supports the police department. Again, the Wausau Police Department leads by example, body cams, mental health services, homelessness, and others. Mental health service or issues are everywhere. It, you know, it was very obvious, and police are mental health and social workers with a badge, and we need to understand that, and we need to make sure that we provide the support services necessary to back them out. And public perceptions are shaped by ethnocultural, mental health, and economic factors that, that may lead to different observations and different thoughts on how they're reacting. So we're presenting this to you today. We've presented it to the Public Safety Committee. We have met with the Wausau Police and Fire Commission. We will be taking this to the public on May 18th for a public hearing. We, from that, we will be evaluating whether our recommendations are, should stand, and then we'll be developing a plan of action. We're hoping that we will complete that work by the end of May and, and present it to you for time for your review and consideration in the 2023 budget, if not sooner. So with that, are there any questions? I'd like to thank the mayor, and again, I want to thank the, the chief and, and Matt Barnes and, and Ben Graham in particular, but also all the members of the police department for their support of our efforts.
And obviously, if you have suggestions or you think something wasn't touched, I mean, you can email me, you can email Chair Robinson. We'll make sure that that gets in the docket for our final discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, we have public comment. This is for pre-registered citizens for matters appearing on the agenda. Another public comment. First up, I have Amanda Ledecky. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Amanda Ledecky. I'm at 616 Sumner Street. I am the Outreach Director with the Community Outreach Task Force. I have to admit, I was hopeful when I saw the headline. I thought to myself, finally, the city is going to address the unhoused population that is growing at an alarming rate, only to realize quickly it was being, I was being let down again. Instead of acknowledging that there are not enough resources and programs available, the well-meaning and resources were to blame. Not just to blame, but adding to the growing number of unhoused citizens by attracting them with our resources. I reached out to multiple agencies and organizations in Wausau to see if they agreed with the statements, and not very many of them did. I 100% agree that the unhoused population is growing, but it is because of the lack of affordable housing and the housing shortage. We have people reaching out to us daily, pleading for anyone who can help them find a place to stay. More and more of your citizens are living out of shelters, in and out of our, our county, in hotels, living out of their cars, couch surfing, and living on the streets. I personally made calls all winter to other counties to see if they had availabilities at their organizations because Wausau's were full. We have laws and ordinances that protect our pets from being left outside and not being fed, but our fellow citizens are not given the same concerns or respect. Instead, we pass ordinances to keep them away. After reading the issues that the Wausau PD has been dealing with, we went to check out the areas of concern, and there are definite issues that need to be addressed in the parking ramps, and Wausau PD shouldn't be the ones that have to deal with them all. We noticed the lack of public bathrooms. Let me rephrase that. There are no public bathrooms, at night especially. When someone becomes unhoused, that does not mean they no longer have to relieve themselves. A simple solution would appear to be public restrooms, which would not only be useful for the unhoused, but all of your citizens in the downtown area. When it comes to people sleeping in the ramps, well, where would you like them to go? I highly encourage everyone to research the Housing First model, and if anyone would like to discuss that model, please reach out to us. It's time for the City of Wausau to try new solutions to existing problems, because the definition of insanity, sorry, the definition of insanity is doing the same things over and over and expecting different results. We have clients who have lived on these streets, our streets, for over 30 years. That is insanity. When our elderly and disabled are reaching out for help because of evictions, that is insanity. When families who are living out of their cars and paying over $2,000 a month for hotel rooms, that is insanity. When the unhoused have nowhere to lay their heads or have not eaten in days, you guessed it, that's insanity. A community is only as strong as its weakest link, and Wausau's not nearly as strong as we'd like to believe. Proverbs 29:7 states, "The righteous care about the just for the poor, but the wicked have no such concern." This is the time for Wausau to prove we are the righteous, and I have faith that we all can do it together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Sandra Couch.
My name is Sandy Couch, and I live at 802 Augusta Avenue. In 19, in 2019, the City Council passed an ordinance in reference to the parking ramp. In 2022, Lisa Rasmussen made a statement of blame for the increase of ordinance violations on the agencies who serve the unhoused, based on, and I quote, "what she heard." Word on the street also indicated that the unhoused are being deposited in Wausau because these agencies and our five-star bridges. These statements are reckless, unprofessional, and an insult to those who dedicated their lives to end homelessness in Wausau. The root cause of homelessness is trauma. The gateway drug is not marijuana, is not alcohol, it is trauma. The other root cause of homelessness is mental illness. A recent increase in homelessness is caused by the affordable housing crisis that has existed and only gotten worse in this community. Agencies assisting the unhoused do not cause trauma. They do not cause mental illness, and they did not cause the housing crisis. There are two camps of belief in how to solve this crisis. services has been proven successful in many communities. The other camp attacks the homeless. They attack the mentally ill, the traumatized, and those unable to pay increasing rents. Criminalizing homelessness has been proven to not work. In fact, it increases homelessness and is the major contributor to chronic homelessness. Repeated arrest, fines, and jail time makes it more difficult for the unhoused to reverse their situation. In other words, criminalizing homelessness in Wasa would be biting off your nose to spite your face. These laws criminalize what, for many, is life-sustaining behavior. Criminalizing homelessness is expensive, and the average cost for a jail cut is $87 a day, where a shelter bed is 28. Criminalizing homelessness is also unconstitutional. It violates the First Amendment and also violates the Eighth Amendment. Identifying groups of humans and labeling them undesirable, making life impossible for them, and caging them for existing is a very dangerous slippery slope. I am not one to push my spiritual beliefs on anyone, but I have to say on a personal note, y'all need Jesus.
Thank you. Next, I have Kurt. I'm going to mispronounce your last name, I'll let you say it.
Dineger.
Dineger, thank you.
Thank you. Kurt Dineger, 224175, Arrowhead Trail in Ringel. I am the President of the Community Outreach Task Force, Board of Directors. I've been working for the past three years, almost now, on average, going at least two to three days a week, you know, out trying to work and help on this problem that's facing the people that don't have housing in the area. And I, too, was pretty disappointed to see the article that really seemed to cite a lack of knowledge and understanding of the situation from somebody who's a chairperson of a committee that deals with this. You know, I kind of appreciate the problems that we're having with people in the downtown area, loitering and stuff like that. You think it's a problem right now, the end of the month here, the 30th, the warming shelter closes overnight, it's going to get how many times worse when that happens? I mean, right now, if it's bad now, it's going to get a lot worse now. I don't understand. But again, maybe with the mall closing down or something, but public bathrooms are definitely a problem as far as that goes. And I'm not seeing it, people coming and going, "We're here because you guys are helping us." We're hearing it because they came in the area for a job, or they already live in the area. I'm not from the area. I guess if I'm homeless, I've been here for 20 years, but if I become homeless, I'm coming to the area because of the five-star bridges, I guess, or something like that. I don't know. But really, I'm pleasantly surprised to see the presentation from Mr. Robinson, the mayor, having a little bit of acknowledgement that there's a problem there, but again, the reckless behavior of making statements that people are just coming because of the people helping them, I think is definitely an issue and I think needs to be acknowledged. Thank you.
Thank you. Last up, I have Benjamin Erickson.
My name is Benjamin Erickson. I live at 2702 Merrill Avenue in Wasa. Just here to address the increasing complaints from the Police Department about homeless actions downtown. So I'm also happy with the presentation from the Policing Task Force with the increase of the awareness of homelessness, and also with Officer Lemren and his position, and including a social worker. I think that's a great idea. Beyond his interactions, they do need case management beyond that, so that's a great step with it. I'm just looking, I guess, for, you know, renewed support from the council about the topic of homelessness. And so, back in 2001, some of the previous individuals made remarks to the article, what comments were made, and things like that. Chief Bliven also mentioned creating a new position. It was a community outreach professional, kind of replace Officer Lemren. I know that he's on the CART team now. So back in 2001, I was a CSO for the City of Wasa, the first CSO that they brought back back in 2001. So as you see, the CSOs now, downtown, on the bikes, on the 400 block, different events, things like that. Big focus, I think, to increase for the CSOs would be to, you know, when I see them, again, they're on the 400 block, different events, riding their bikes, things like that, you know, going through the parks, on the sidewalk, things like that. I don't see them doing a lot of contacts with the businesses, going into the businesses, you know, going under the bridges, going in the parks more, you know, deeper with that, making those contacts, and then passing that on to, you know, a sworn officer, things like that. So I know that's what I did a lot when the position was first created. I did a lot of business interactions, helped a lot, got to learn and know the business owners and see it firsthand, and then also build those relationships with people that are frequenting downtown, whether it's the parks, under bridges, different events, things like that. So I think to focus more on the CSO and their roles, too, that are out there, would help increase that communication, and then that can pass on to, you know, that new position or social worker, things like that, to get them those resources they need and build those relationships. And it's a non-sworn person, too. So sometimes, you know, if an officer goes up to someone that's under a bridge, a homeless person, you know, like that, there's that. They don't want to talk, you know, someone in a uniform, things like that. So that's a good thing, too, about that position being a non-sworn position there, too. So again, just looking for renewed support from the council with that topic, and just moving forward, just trying to find a solution for all the concerns and complaints downtown. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That concludes this portion of public comment. We are now on to our consent agenda. That is file number 220401 through file number 210414. I would entertain a motion. It looks like we have a motion by Alder Larson and maybe a second by Alder Rasmussen. Any discussion? I'm looking at the new technology, and it's very fun. Oh.
What? You have different people?
Oh. Oh, maybe I have a motion by Watson and a second by...
The motion is by Watson.
Okay. I guess Alder Larson's face became yellow. No, it... We'll be better at this. Is there any discussion? I'm not seeing any, so I think the clerk can tell you what to do.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
Look at that. All right. Next up, we have item number 220403, Mayor's Appointments. We have an appointment of Chris Filts to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, reappointment of John Kroll to the Sustainability, Energy, and Environment Commission, and that is what I have. I would entertain a motion. Oh, oh my goodness. Okay. I have a motion by Watson and a second by Killian. Any discussion? Okay.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
Wow, this is pretty fancy, you guys. Okay. All right, we're now on to file number 220407. It's a resolution from the SISAM Committee approving a detour agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. I would entertain a motion. I have a motion by Alder Larson and a second by Alder Herbst. Any discussion? I'm not seeing any.
You may begin voting. These are so fast.
I know.
Motion passes 11 to 0.
All righty. Thank you. We are now on to file number 211109. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee approving the adoption of the standard allowance of revenue loss pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, the SLFRF program revolving loan. I would entertain... I guess we have a motion already by Alder Denny and a second by Alder Rasmussen. Any discussion? I have Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one thing to ask, and that is, we have 321109s, and we also have three of the same number and two of the same number, and it gets kind of confusing. And I guess in the future, I realize they're all sort of the same, but they're not. If we could perhaps put an A, B, or C after that number if we're going to have one number for three different items. Thank you.
I'm looking at my folks in the clerk's office, who maybe know how this happens.
I asked that same question yesterday, because I was making sure it wasn't a mistake, but those are all budget-related items. So all budget-related items get to that 1109 code, and it starts with 21 because it was passed in 2021.
Would it be possible, then, to put an A, B, or C after that, not to get them confused?
Yes.
And the same underneath here, we have two county ones down below, too, that are basically the same number, but they're different. They're the same, but they're not.
Okay. I think we will take that to the clerks. We're getting some notes taken, so yes, thank you for the suggestion. Any other comments? All right, I guess we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All righty. Thank you. We are now on to another file, number 211109, resolution from the Finance Committee approving and adopting the budget for American Rescue Plan Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund-funded projects. I would entertain a motion. I have a motion by Alder Rasmussen and a second by Alder Watson. Any discussion? Alder Gisselman.
So I think the essence of this motion is to accept the LED lighting in the skateboard park. Am I understanding that correctly? Is there a way to separate these out? I would be in support of the LED, but I have serious questions at this point in time with regard to the skateboard park.
I'm going to maybe... Yeah, I guess you would amend it.
Oh, I appreciate your comments. In the future, we'll do separate resolutions just to facilitate better review by council, so I appreciate that, Gary.
Because in the light of this evening's conversation, I think that there's a need desperately in this community for public restrooms downtown, and I would imagine that there would be, you know, as much as I support the Park Department and their moving towards the skateboard park, I think that there's other urgent needs in this community that we have to be, this council has to be speaking towards. And I think that, you know, the skateboard park is great. I will support the LED lighting, but I think that there's other needs, immediate needs instead of the skateboard park.
Okay.
So how do you want us to proceed, then? If that's possible.
Are you offering an amendment?
Yes. So my amendment would be to split the two projects so that we would vote separately on both of those projects.
You could do that, or you could move to amend this main motion now that's been made to approve this particular resolution and strike Skateboard Park from the whereas clause and the, well, the last two whereas clauses, so that it's removed from this resolution. But if your motion is to separate them and create another resolution addressing the skateboard park and vote on the LED lighting first, I think that would be appropriate.
I think I want to be fair, because I think the skateboard park was brought before the City Council, so I think that the City Council should have that in front of them, but that's just where I'm at this evening.
You can probably hear the attorney whispering to me. We're asking if there's any objection to dividing this resolution into two different projects. I'm not seeing any objection. So are we good to go? Do I need a second to this?
So is this an amendment?
Is this an amendment, or are we...
No, we are splitting this resolution into two separate votes.
Okay.
So we'll have to, if they're approved, we will recraft them for signature tomorrow. But the motion now would be, yeah, proper city officials are authorized and directed to modify the budget as outlined above with regard to the street lighting.
Okay. So to help us along, I'm going to assume that we're talking about the LED street lighting conversion program first.
That's correct.
So that's what we'll talk about now. If, I'm guessing, folks have their lights on, they would like to talk about that? Okay. All right. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lord knows we need lights, you know, more lights, but what I'm really disappointed is that District 10 kind of got left out. I mean, I see, if you're looking at the streets, not counting 17th Avenue, there's 14 lights out of 1410 that are in District 10. And we have high crime in the area, we have areas where there's no sidewalks, no lights in the middle of the blocks. I just think that, as much as I would love to support this, I can't support this because of the way District 10 was left out of this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alder Killian.
There we go. Thank you, Madam Chair. To kind of the subject matter, Alder Larson was discussing, may I ask, what was the rationale or the method that these streets were identified for selection and that others were not selected?
I'm going to invite our Rick, maybe, and Eric, tag-team it, however. Thank you.
I'll let Rick speak to the details, but in general, this is our street lighting that we own and operate and maintain. We also have WPS lighting throughout the city. That's not our responsibility to change out, so those could be different. So it's my understanding, Rick, that these are all the remaining lights that we own that we're going to retrofit.
Correct. This would be every city-owned light that is existing would be converted to LED. So it's not, we're not adding any, it's just all converting...
You're not picking and choosing.
Correct. It's the whole shebang will have all...
Okay.
I was just going to say, too, I think, you know, it's important to note the savings of energy that we'll have, as well as the maintenance savings in a move like this that will help future budgets. You know, it's not often that we get to consider spending that we know is going to save us money. We definitely have experienced significant savings in our parking since we moved to LED.
And just as a point of order, there was a line of questioning here, and the savings was not part of it. I'd like to get back to the light selection. So you're saying that these are the lights that the city owns and the rest would be WPS?
Usually, wood poles on cornered blocks are Wisconsin Public Service-owned, which they have been slowly changing to LED also. But this would be all of our lights, which are all the decorative lighting and all the metal poles throughout the city. Those are city-owned that we would be retrofitting.
So streets like Adrian and Edwards and so forth that I don't think found their way onto this list, those are not city-owned, then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we're going to vote, and this is specifically on the item related to LED streetlight conversion. No.
You just split it. Okay.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right. So we are still on our item, 211109. All right. So we are still on our item, 211109, the resolution approving and adopting the budget for American Rescue Plan Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery funded projects. But now we are talking about the skateboard park. I would entertain a motion. Do I?
There we go.
I have a motion by Alder Rasmussen and a second by Alder Watson. Is there any discussion? Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. When we had looked at this in finance, we tried to look at it through the COVID relief lens and tried to make sure that all of the projects that we selected when we were ranking and scoring really fit that profile. And one of the things that those funds asked us to look into or consider was how we can create or improve new active public spaces. So one of the things that people were, one of the few things people were able to do during the height of the pandemic was to like go outside and be active. And the skate park has needed attention for some time. It'll address some safety concerns. It will also offer some new amenities. And I think when we look at active outdoor spaces to get people to like live these healthy lifestyles and be active, we need to have things that appeal to all ages. And we can't assume that all of our parks are for everyone. And so the skate park serves, it's something for young people to get out and do. And, you know, it's a way for them to pursue a hobby that they're passionate about, but it's uniquely different from many of our other parks. And that's why we were excited about it in finance. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to note that we have Parks Director Jamie Polly here, and I know that there is some private donation that would be going into this as well, if there are questions about that. But first, I'll call on Alder Gisselman.
Thank you. I just reaffirm what I said before. I think, and I appreciate Alder Rasmussen's with regard to public spaces, but I really feel that this, the City Council is going to be under a crucial eye. And I think that we have to really be careful on how we come and start spending our federal monies. And I think that public spaces, there's a lot of public spaces in this community that I think needs desperate help. Been a member of the Park Commission or the Park Committee for a long time and understand their great work. But I think at this point in time, I think the City Council has to really be diligent in looking at our community and seeing the needs that we have, including public spaces, of course, but including everything. And for me, at this point in time, I'm not, I'm not of one mind with regard to a skateboard park. Thank you.
Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. Just one thing also that we should consider is that the Finance Committee agreed that we want to run a rolling application schedule for ARPA funding. So just tonight, we looked at three more requests from within the departments, and we're going to be ranking and scoring those over the next two weeks. Whatever clears that process, you'll see here. And I think over our, you know, next few meetings, we're going to be seeing a multitude of requests. And I think we do want to like spread that ARPA funding out so that we can achieve big impacts, but not all down one thing. So if we want to do, you know, a localized project for lead pipes, if we want to do low-income housing, we've already spent on some of that, but we certainly could look at other projects, maybe with low-income developers. This project, there's a number of things that were being asked for in the realm of public safety. So I think, and some of the things already, we've weeded out because they don't fit. They're like a better fit for CIP. So, but it's a rolling schedule. And, you know, we do have $15 million that we have to spend down by 2024. And so I still support the skateboard park because I think it's got a different appeal.
Thank you. Any other comments? Or are we ready to vote? Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I ask Ms. Polly a few questions about this?
It looks like she's double-teaming council and county board meetings.
I know.
Lots of fun for you.
I need double, multitask.
Thank you. And I know, we work together on parks and also with the Block Grant Committee. We've seen the good that that's done for new playground equipment for children in different parts of the city. Might there be, if not a single alternative source, might there be a composite of fund sources that we could try to look at and pursue outside of ARPA? I'm not saying is it, is there a 90% probability of an alternative source right now. I'm just asking, is there at least a possibility of looking at kind of a sum or composite of alternative sources, maybe even involving sponsorship, as we've talked about with the Parks Committee recently?
Yeah, and that is actually part of this plan, too. So what we're asking for ARPA was a portion of the project. I do have a pretty good-sized group of citizens that are very excited about the skate park and have been actually for a couple of years because I believe I submitted this as a CIP project two years ago. Prior to submitting it as a CIP project, I did try to submit it as a community development block grant project. However, it didn't qualify for the community development block grant because of the fact that it is not a localized, it doesn't serve just one area of the city, and I forget the wording that's in that.
Like a demographic of some sort.
Right. It's, the city only has one, so people have to travel to it. And not everybody has the ability to travel to it. So the playgrounds qualify because they are ones that are within that specific demographic. That is the requirement of the block grant. And even though Oak Island Park does fit that, the skate park being the only one in the city disqualifies it. So one of the plans with this is to get a portion of it with ARPA dollars if we could or through capital improvement. And then we will be working with the citizen groups that we have to raise other funds through applications to community foundations, local foundations, possibly naming rights. We do have that option, and sponsorships at the skate park. So there will be an additional effort to be able to fund the whole project. What we have for, requested for ARPA dollars gets the main part, but with that, the quality of the skate park right now and what we need to do with it, it's a pretty significant upgrade because the surfacing itself is not suitable for the current conditions.
Thank you. And that actually led to just my last question. So in terms of safety or the nuts and bolts of the skate park, is there a way to satisfy that need that doesn't amount to the 200 and some thousand dollars? Or are we to understand that's kind of to bring it to a point where it's safe for kids to use? I mean, how much of this is about enhancement versus bringing it up to just kind of a safe and usable skate park?
I would say, working with the skateboard companies that we worked with, of the 225,000 that I've requested, about 45, 50% of that is just to bring the surfacing and the, if we utilize the current ramps, just to get them up to safety code. And then, actually, I'd probably say it's more than that because they gave us about 300,000 project and 200,000 would be to get it up to that. So the majority of what we're asking would get it to where it is. It is expanding it a little bit, the surfacing, so that would be the concrete to expand it. But it would be replacing the asphalt surfacing that we have now with a concrete surfacing that's more suitable. It's longer lasting. It's safer for people to use. And then it would be refurbishing as much of the current equipment as we can. And then the additional amount, and most of that would be the fundraising amount, would be the new amenities that we would add that would be the desire of the user groups.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alder Denny.
Thank you. I do have one question. Ms. Polly, I think Lisa and Gary kind of commented on a similar concern I have with how we do the ARPA. It's a rolling system, but it really takes away the ability to compare and rank some of these things side by side if we do them as they come necessarily. But you also mentioned that this was postponed in the past for, was there a reason given? I think I saw where the intention was to potentially flip it into an ARPA fund. I see some problems with doing that. I'm not saying that's where, that was your doing, but it was, it's the way we've set up the system to potentially put things off that we could be making decisions on their own merits within our own department budgets.
I think, Mary Ann, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, when we, when I presented this as a CIP project, you know, there's only so many, much money for CIP projects. A part of that was we wanted to get the community more involved, to have a portion of that be to be fundraised. So that was one of the aspects of not funding it then, is it, it was, it's a large amount of money. So it would have taken up a lot of our CIP, and we wanted to get the community more involved. And I think that, you know, looking at it and knowing that there were different funding options, ARPA being one of them, but also community foundation and other ways, there were other options to look at to help fund this going forward, if I remember correctly. It was a couple of years ago.
Would it be okay if I add something?
Yes.
I think, too, you know, during the last budget, when the federal government ruled out ARPA, the uses were very narrow, and we were working on interim rules. And so at the time, we, as Jamie accurately said, we ran out of money in the capital budget, you know, as far as what was available. And at that point, we had thought we didn't have a process in place to evaluate ARPA requests. And so there was some discussion about considering it for ARPA sometime in the future, but it wasn't because we wanted to save our money. We had already depleted our money for the budget. You know, parks, projects often do rank low when they are up against streets and police and fire projects. So.
Thank you. And I probably didn't phrase that as tactically as I could have. Certainly, it's somewhat of a risk putting something down the road into a, you know, possible ARPA thing. So I appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Polly, I guess I'm kind of torn on this, too, but I'm asking you, how frequently is this used?
From my experience, the skate park is used quite often. However, I do know because of the shape that it's in, it's probably not used as much as the kids would like to use it because it's dangerous. So it's to a point, and I mentioned this even two years ago, we were limping it along, it's to a point that if we don't do something with it, we have to close it because I think the safety is the biggest concern. But from the emails and the calls that I have had of groups of kids that, it's not just kids, kids and adults that want to help to design and build it, there's a big desire for that. And I've been in contact with the owner of Central Board Shop, who has a lot of connections. He's even donated money already to it. So I think it would, it's used well, but it could be used more, and the desire is there. And the Western Skate Park, I go past that. It's used all the time. And I think the whole community would benefit from the differences between the, you know, two skate parks that we have in the area.
I guess I can see Alder Gisselman's point, too, but I also want to point out that, you know, we just had a police task force report and stuff, you know, and if this is something that keeps our kids off the streets and out of trouble, you know, I think that's worth a merit in itself, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And to Alder Larson's question, it is used frequently. And as you know, Alder Larson, that side of town has not gotten the amenities that it should have compared to other parts of the city. I don't see off of Thomas Street a fireplace you can hit the switch with gas and it comes on. You'd have to go down by Riverlife for that. So yes, not only do we need to maintain these amenities, because I heard, you know, through the grapevine, if we didn't do that, they might throw a skate park over on the East Riverfront instead. And that does take these assets away from our low and moderate income families and children. So not only do we need to maintain these assets on the west side and on the east side, but where the kids need them, we need to bolster them. And so, you know, I was a little torn, but hearing what I've heard, I'm going to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I don't see anybody else requesting to speak, so I'm going to take the opportunity to become partisan on this issue. I'm very enthusiastic about this project. I've heard from the skater community for the last two years that they're looking for upgrades. So thank you for bringing this to us. And I've already heard from folks that they're ready to start donating whenever we get going on this. So I'm excited to give the kids another option to work on. Now I'm partisan. And Alder Lukens.
Excuse me if I did something wrong in order.
Welcome to the discussion.
I just wanted to add to it because I work with a lot of kids and enough over the years also of poverty. And so, you know, that is somewhere that they can go. I've also heard from many, many kids, many parents, there just isn't a lot for kids to do in this community. So from that standpoint, too, I really like this idea.
All right. I think we are ready to vote. If you are, thank you. Director Polly.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to 1.
Thank you very much, everybody. All right, we are now on to our third version of file number 211109. It's a resolution approving a modification of the 2022 budget, general fund, and capital project funds for projects in process and other obligations. I would entertain a motion. Looks like I have a motion from Alder Larson and a second from Alder Herbst. Any discussion here? All right, I think we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to 1.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, this is where I'm asking you to suspend the rules. 12A, referral of resolutions. This does require a two-thirds vote for our new folks. We have to suspend the rules because this is coming from a committee, well, one of them is coming from me, and then others are ordinance updates. So I guess it's all my problem. So I'm asking you to suspend the rules. I have a motion. I have a motion by Watson and a second by Denny. You don't get to discuss this.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right, thank you. And now, even though I said this is from me, I might flip it over to our city attorney who can explain exactly what we're doing in this series of votes.
All right, the first one is you're creating executive committee, correct, Mayor?
Yes.
File number 220409. This will be, we're creating by resolution this committee as a new standing committee of the common council and replacing the legislative committee and the coordinating committee for now. We, there was a thought that we would replace the Administrative Appeal Review Board. However, that's required by statute. And by ordinance, we adopted the state statute. Now, you don't have to, but if you don't adopt the procedure under the state statute, you must have an alternate due process procedure in place in effect which serves the same purpose. And that's to review decisions or appeal decisions made by staff or other committees, commissions, or boards of the city. And it struck me that with six chairs making up the executive committee, they'd probably all be a bit conflicted if it came to hearing appeals of decisions made by other committees on which they, one or more of them would likely serve. So that's something we can still explore. Perhaps the Rules Review Committee might take that up. I don't know. But we can always look at the names of standing committees, the duties of standing committees, and so forth. But this is creating the new committee. And on the second page where the longest whereas is, the mayor provided these duties and responsibilities. Our office added number 10, which ordinance is referenced back when we changed the rest of the rules. So I have a staff memo that appears not in order there in the packet, but back here further, which is interesting. It really talks about the Community Development Department. And when we searched the code to eliminate the references to the coordinating committee, there's a whole section under Community Development Department where the coordinating committee is tasked with hiring consultants and professional services to assist the Community Development Department. So because we eliminated that committee, we added that duty then from the ordinances to the list of the duties of the executive committee. So I hope that explains this.
Yes, I think you got it. So I guess at this point, I would entertain a motion so we could start talking about it. I have a motion by Alder Rasmussen and a second by Alder Henke. And then I see Alder Rasmussen. I'll call on you.
Thank you. I think that this definitely is an effort worth trying. I think that, you know, at one point, when I started on the council, we had the coordinating committee, but it rarely ever met. But I think its mission was solid. So initially, the coordinating committee was the chairs of all the standing committees, and they would, they were, at least the intent was that they would get together and figure out on an issue where there were multiple committee tasks, which committee would there were multiple committee tasks, which committee would take things up and in what order and when. And so, the idea that you would be coordinating the flow of a large item would really streamline the process. And, but it never met. I mean, it's, I think I've been around 14 years and I've maybe been to two of them. So, I think disbanding that and coming up with something that maybe meets more frequently, especially if we're going to try to shepherd along the implementation of the strategic plan, which could easily fall by the wayside. And it's kind of like herding cats. I think we're going to have to figure out, like, which committees are going to do which things so that we can get from start to finish. So, I'm kind of excited to try this.
Yay. Me too. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not real excited to try this because, you know, you could end up with as few as three people on this committee or two people on this committee. Or you could end up with six. You know, I guess, and, you know, the fact that it hasn't been needed or it hasn't been used in the past two years anyway. I mean, you once told me that we are the governing body. I mean, all this stuff is going to come to council anyway. It always has. I just don't see where this is necessary. Thank you.
I just maybe want to maybe have folks consider that if we would like to make sure that we have a certain number on this committee, one of the things we could do is if there are multiple chair, if there is an Alder who has multiple chairs, we could put in something about voting in an at-large member or?
Well, exactly. I had thought that too. Whereas if a chair is, chairs three committee, then you could have the vice chair or possibly somebody picked from the committee if the vice chair is already taken too. But that being said, then you've got six people on this committee and only four people that are left in the dark. And, you know, I can see where this would be coming handy if this executive committee, if we were like the county or something where we had 30 to 50 people, we could have an executive committee. But when you've got six people on an executive committee leaving four out of the dark, in the dark, I just don't see where that's productive. Thank you.
Alder Denny.
Okay. I've got several questions. I think maybe the most important one to hit right now is it seems like it's a potentially a seven-member committee chaired by the council president, which I think Lou just mentioned. So, that's very similar to a committee of the whole seven members light, you know, committee of the whole light. So, we're excluding essentially seven members. And then, I guess I'd also question, there was a reason, I believe, we have only five members on most committees so that we meet the meeting requirements of not having potential walking quorum of the council. So, it's a, a meeting is defined as convening of the members of the government body, basically roughly half of the body is present. You potentially have, you're into that territory of walking quorum. You're excluding four people. And I think Mr. Killian last week mentioned the possibility of convening a committee of the whole, which really seems like maybe the more eloquent way to manage that.
Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My first question, and this is not a rhetorical question, it's, I'm looking for the answer particularly because it says before, kind of enumerating the duties and responsibilities of this committee, it says beforehand, quote, "but are not limited to" as well. So, if I may ask, what exactly then, you know, could I get an example or two of what would not fall under the duties or responsibilities of this committee, just the way that it's written? And I'd have, after that answer, just a point or two additional on that topic. But is there something that wouldn't fall under its authority then?
I'm not, I'm not really sure.
I think this is the way you drafted it.
Yeah.
Mayor.
Yeah.
So, did you anticipate them taking up something else as the executive committee that's not in among the listed duties?
No, but I guess if there was something that should be discussed, that should go to somewhere, what I didn't like last term was we had orphan resolutions that ended up maybe not going to the right committee, not being discussed. I'm thinking of specifically things coming from liberation and freedom. Where should that go? Probably here.
Okay. Thank you. And just a few follow-up comments or questions then on the specifics that are listed kind of within the duties and responsibilities. And I think some I'd have some concerns with, like, number nine, coordinating the efforts of city staff to initiate, create, or lobby for legislation beneficial to the city and/or its residents. My question there would, are these things done with the expectation that after the coordinating, pardon me, the executive committee has touched them, they would then go to the common council for full approval?
Yes.
They would?
Yes. And that I pulled directly from the legislative committee duties.
Well, thank you. And the reason it, of course, sparked some concern from me was just because in the last few months, when there was lobbying for legislation that affected District III, the city council knew nothing about it. And staff had gone to Madison apparently on some rogue mission vis-à-vis council oversight. So, I would not want to see the executive committee at all signing off on lobbying for legislation. At least if we could amend it to say, except for District III. If my colleagues would like it, I certainly would not. So, that concerns me. But if it's going to go to the full council, that would then alleviate some of that concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder McElhany.
Thank you. I guess I want to, I guess I want to explain what my idea is with this as well. And I want to address the concern about walking quorum. This is going to be an open meeting of a council. There is no walking quorum when we are, have an agenda and we have a thing. So, that is not an issue. Number two would be, I believe that the executive committee is, as the mayor has said, the orphan resolutions. We've had people go around from non-standing committees that they wanted to do recommendations or a resolution, or they had an idea. And we didn't know which committee to go to. And there was kind of that, that back and forth. Those things are specifically going to this committee to, you know, get a structure on where would be the best pathway from which committee. And then, of course, going right back, right back to council. Anything that goes to the executive committee would come to council. I don't know how often this would meet. I mean, I don't see this as being, you know, overwrought committee that needs to meet, you know, quite a lot. But it is to try to address those concerns that we've had last term with those kind of things. And I don't know, I think, like, just to know that everything that we do in any committee comes to council. We don't make decisions outside. Everybody will get a vote on everything. That's, that's very important. Thank you.
Thank you. So, city attorney Jacobson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to just make two comments so that we're all clear about everything. Special committees, particularly the five that have been created during the last term, by rule, report to the council directly because they've created the special committees unless the creating ordinance or resolution assigns their report to a different committee. So, let's say if policing task force or safe elections were said, you know, come up with your recommendations and report to public health and safety or to report to this standing committee of the council. If that's not there, then they're going to come back and should report directly to the council. Well, this resolution before you does not state in there anywhere that this is going to be a standing committee about two things back on your agenda where we have amending all of the council rules. They were all put into one ordinance amendment. It does list the executive committee as a standing committee. So, like all other standing committees, the executive committee would report directly or their recommendations would obviously go to council. And walking quorum issues are only of concern when decisions are being made and discussions are being had outside of the public eye. We're worried then about violating the open meeting law. But as long as the meeting of the executive committee is properly agendized according to the open meeting law, there's no problem with the number of members on that committee. It's just that it is a majority of the council. So, in that sense, it's somewhat like the committee of the whole, but it just is what it is. That's, that's the membership that the mayor is recommending. So, thank you for letting me make those points.
Thank you. So, I have a bunch of people that want to speak, but I also have a request to amend this. So, I'm wondering if I will let people speak and then I will maybe call on you, Alder Watson. Okay. Alder Denny.
So, it's to the orphan resolutions. So, then, maybe, looking at where I've been on, the airport committee for the last six years, we've never passed anything that came directly to the council. It always had to go through enough. As my understanding, as a non-standing committee, it must go to a standing committee. It can't go directly to the council. So, maybe we need to look at those orphans that need to, need some report to or direction before it comes directly to the council.
Okay. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question to you would be then, should this pass, how are you going to address this as to how many members are on there? Because as I said, there could be as many as two people on this committee because two people could hold all six standing committees, or there could be as many as six. So, I guess my question to you would be, how many council members would you want on this committee?
So, I guess my first answer is that it's your committee, so you get to decide. And we have, I know of one chair that's been elected so far. So, I think once we get the rest of our chairs elected, this is something that maybe we could flip over to the rules review committee for a little bit more mulling. And if, if we decide that it doesn't match the criteria listed in this resolution, if we need more members, fewer members, that's what I would say.
Thank you.
Yep. Alder Gisselman.
Thank you. Just so that, as a standing committee then, everything that goes before this committee eventually will get to the city council. It doesn't have the power to stop something right there?
No. This isn't a killer committee.
It is.
No, with the one caveat that we don't have any perfect rule right now in black and white that talks about advancing failed recommendations out of standing committees. Sometimes we have advanced those and sometimes we have not, depending on what the committee itself that either fails a recommendation or passes it decides to do.
Well, that would be my concern because even a failed motion, if it's a standing committee, as far as I understand, it would still have to come up to the city council as a, as a vote, you know, in the, whatever, as a failed motion. But I, that's still, I just want to be clear that I'm understanding it that even those failed motions still have to come out of the standing committee to the city council.
I don't, I don't know that that's required anywhere. That could be clarified in the rules. I can't think, nobody's up here that's got the memory right now, other than Mary Ann probably, to help me think of some that did not get advanced when they failed. But I understand your point. I mean, then otherwise, a standing committee could, in essence, kill a measure if it's voted down. But then, they're not recommending technically that it be advanced to council. So, if we want to make a rule that all recommendations, whether they fail or pass at standing committee, get forwarded to council, the body can certainly do that. But I can see the argument either way. If it, if it fails at committee, then they're not recommending that they buy a majority vote of the standing committee that it be advanced to council. But we have had some issues that have been of such public interest in the past. I know that some failed ones have advanced to council.
But that would be up to the entire city council to decide that.
I think it should be. And I think it should be clarified in the rules perhaps.
Another rules review agenda item.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question based on what Ms. Jacobson had said about some of the advisory committees, the way their founding resolutions are set up. They may report directly to the common council, at least in the resolution language. So, would that still then remain that way? Or would the executive committee, because they're steering where certain things go, could they say, well, we're going to override that? Which would trump in that case? Would it be the definition through the founding resolution of that advisory committee? Does that make sense? I could try to distill it in a less confusing.
I'm not following it because it is a standing committee. It's not a special committee. The executive committee is not a special committee or a non-standing committee. It's a standing committee.
If I could, if I could just maybe pop in here. So, every authorizing resolution that we voted on, Affordable Housing Task Force, for instance, if we have it reporting to the council, it will continue to unless we amend that. And we could, but we haven't. So, is that answering your question?
Yes. Let me just distill it down into maybe a simple, cruder example. So, Liberation and Freedom Committee and the founding resolution, it says it's an advisory committee to the common council. So, it's a pretty direct, efficient line to the common council. Could, for example, the executive committee say, well, that may be the case, but since we're guiding where certain things go now, we're going to vote so that this, you know, what came out of liberation and freedom may actually go to a different committee, a different standing committee versus being an advisory communication or effort directly to the common council. Does that make sense?
I think, I think you could probably decide to do either. I guess what I was thinking about this, for instance, the policing task force recommendations, we know that we're, you saw them. We're going to have a lot of work ahead of us and they're not all going to go to the same committee. And so, my thought was that maybe the executive committee could help us divide and conquer some of those things. Some would go to public health and safety. Some might go to parks, finance. And then, some might just not have a really great, like, maybe it would take the legislative efforts of the executive committee to kind of consider, if that makes sense.
It does. I may have an amendment later on that, but the information does make sense. Thank you.
Okay. Alder Herbst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just inquiring here. We talked last week about how many minutes that we can speak. Are we limited to two minutes per subject or are we limited to three subjects for 10 minutes? Right now, I'm confused. I'd like some clarification on that.
According to Roberts' Rules, each member can speak up to 10 minutes twice on any matter per day, per subject.
Okay. 10 minutes is a long time.
Yeah, 12, 20 minutes because you get to do it twice for 10 minutes.
Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I think maybe it would help to clarify, like, when we talk about non-standing or advisory committees, the key word there is advisory. So, when that committee is advising the council, so let's take liberation and freedom as an example. If they want the council, if they want to advise the council that it should undertake the study of an issue or that it should undertake policymaking on an issue, the policymaking part is what happens in the standing committees or would happen in the executive committee and then be funneled to the standing committee. So, an advise, in acting in an advisory capacity versus policymaking, I think that's where the line gets drawn between when an advisory committee reports to the council, it's just that, it's a report. It's not an action item. It's not a votable item. An advisory recommendation is just that. But when it gets to a point where if any of these committees then are, like, treading into the policymaking realm and saying, we want you to pass an ordinance about this or this, you know, whether it be, you know, anything. We had talked about greenhouse gases in one of those committees. If we wanted to pass something like that where it's an actionable item, that I think then should, if the advice is coming out of the committee that we want to look at that, that needs to endure the committee process. Because some of these things cost money. So, then you have a finance obligation. Some of them affect other city operations. And that's where the committee process would, would kick in. And I think that's where, you know, when you talk about what trumps what, if you're just giving advice, that goes right to council. But when it involves way more of the policymaking and money spending part, then it crosses over. So.
City attorney.
Thank you. I'd like to confirm what Alder Rasmussen is saying. In your Rule 13D, it talks about a subcommittee being appointed by either another standing committee or the council, but it has to, will have the consent of the council. committee or the council, but it has to have the consent of the council, and they are created for the purpose of investigating issues before the committee, whatever they're assigned to study, and making recommendations on those issues they've been assigned to study. So it's more like the policing task force. You saw it tonight. Here are the issues we're studying. Here are our findings. Here is our result. Here's our report. Now what are we going to do with that? That's a good example. How are we going to implement these priorities and the order in which they put them forward, if that's what the council wants to do? And is it going to take money? Or is it going to take a commitment of staff or creation of a position? All of those things then would be legislative or policy decisions that would go through the appropriate committees and come to council.
Can I have a quick follow-up on that in response to Anne? So as an example, Alder Denny mentioned the airport committee, which she and I are both on, and I think that's a good example. The airport committee passes policy where it involves management functions of the airport. But when the airport committee approves an item that costs money or requires finance or plan commission approval, like hangar building or site planning, then their recommendations are certainly not final. They undertake more of a process. But, you know, if it's just a matter of day-to-day management of the airport type stuff, the airport committee does make those decisions autonomously, if that makes any sense. And the other ones would probably follow something similar.
Yes. All right. I'm going to have Alder Watson maybe talk to us about what she's suggesting now.
Okay. So I guess I had a few suggestions to maybe make this something that everybody can agree. So is there a way that we could add a whereas? The committee should be at least six members, six different members, and if there is duplicate chairpersons, then the vice chair serves on the committee? And also, I guess, the last whereas on the first page, it's sort of like the recommendations of special committees to be forwarded to the executive committee simultaneously to the council. That way, both entities see that. Maybe action can be taken by the executive committee, but at least the council sees those recommendations and reports. And then...
Can you read those again, please, Alder Watson? Did you get those down, clerk? Is this a motion to amend?
Should we start with the first one? Okay. The first one, I guess, is just, I don't know how to exactly say the best way, but it should be a minimum of a six-member group.
Six members?
Six different members. So no duplication.
I'd put it or add it to the end of the third whereas.
Yeah.
Be comprised of the chairperson of each of the city council committees. Council president will be, and the council president will be chaired by the city council. Oh, that's not even worded right. That needs to be changed, too. The committee will be chaired by the city council president, and...
And if there is duplicate, duplicate chairpeople, then the vice chair will serve in their stead.
I think that's good.
Champion.
All right. So we're going to start with that one.
Okay.
We have a motion to amend by Alder Watson. Is there a second?
There was a second.
Alder Denny has seconded. Okay.
The vice chair will serve.
Will serve in place of the chair if there's duplication. So I see we have a bunch of people that would like to speak. I'm wondering if you want to speak on this amendment, or if you would like to hold. Yes. Ah, okay. I have Alder Denny first, and then Alder Henke.
Yeah, my question, we'd have to determine which vice chair. So if I held two chairs, economic development and finance, do I choose which Alder, from which one, that I select? Who selects that?
I had the same thought. How is this going to work? We are almost going to have to follow the committees and the order in which they meet. I mean, that would be one way to do it in chronological order. And as the chairs are selected, we start writing those down and keeping track of who's going to end up on the executive committee. And if we have duplicate chairpersons, then after the first chair they're elected to, then the vice chair of those committees would serve. That would be the way I would think it would work logically, but you can set it to do whatever you want to do.
Yep. Okay. Alder Henke.
Yeah, right to my point, we could end up with seven people, because you have two vice chairs. One chair with two vice chairs underneath them, which chair, which vice chair gets priority?
We are very concerned about this committee becoming a megalomaniacal committee.
And it is a potential of seven, because you've got six standing committee chairs and the council president. So it is a potential of seven.
Okay. I'm going to let Alder Watson speak.
I guess my initial intention was a minimum of six, right? So I mean, it could be seven, if that's needed, but a minimum of six members, so there are six individual voices on that committee. And then also to the, I mean, can I amend it to be the order? Like, starting chronologically from first chair to second, you know? I don't know.
Can you, do you have a request to amend currently?
No. I don't know how to turn that off. I do.
Yeah, if there's no object, who seconded it? Alder Denny? Would you mind if we updated the amendment to say that we'll go in chronological order when the committees meet?
Fine with me.
Okay. Looks good. All right. All right. I'm going to call on Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I'm actually the second to this amendment, but...
The amendment, no.
Oh. Are you okay with that?
I am. And I think maybe the easy way to clarify it is to indicate that we want six unduplicated members. Would that work?
Yeah.
Six unduplicated members. And so then, in the event, because you could have, I mean, what if someone holding dual chairmanships, what if the, you know, hopefully, those vice chairs would be two different people? If they're the same person, we'd have to figure out some other arrangement. So...
You all would be voting on these appointments, too. So this is another discussion that we could have ad nauseam at that point as well.
So if we have six unduplicated members, that should clarify the vice chair situation. Because the vice chair could be the chairman of something else.
Can I say unduplicated?
You can. I believe that's what's written. Does that...
Well, I, and if there's, and if there's duplicate chairpeople, the vice chair will serve in place of the chair. The vice chair will be selected by chronological order of committee meeting times.
Good. Okay. We are now ready to vote on the amendment. We're voting on the amendment to ensure we have six unduplicated voices from our council.
I can see we don't have the word six in there.
Okay. Do you...
Do you want that added?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I believe I said six.
Yeah. I wrote that down when you said it, so I don't feel weird demanding that it's in there.
So I add it in to add to the third whereas, we'll have a minimum of six members, and if there's duplicate.
Okay. Are we ready to vote on the amendment? We are.
You may begin voting.
This one.
You did not. Okay. Yes, I can enter it. Okay. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right. So here we are on the resolution as amended. Any more discussion points that we'd like to cover? Just making...
So this still has the second. This, Lisa and Chad.
Alder, okay. So are you requesting to speak, or you would like to vote on the resolution as amended?
I have a request to speak.
I have an M by, oh, okay. All right.
Is that a motion?
Perfect. This technology is going to take a second. All right. I'm not seeing anybody else with a request to speak or a motion to amend. So I think we're ready to vote on the executive committee, creating the executive committee and amended to ensure that we have six unduplicated voices, and we'll have vice chairs if the chair is a duplicate.
I add it as amended to the vote.
Thank you.
Okay. You may begin voting. Motion passes 8 to 3.
All righty. We are now moving on to file number 821250. This is an ordinance amending section 2.56.010 Public Records repeal and recreate section 2.56020 Records retention. Is there anything you'd like to say about this? City Attorney.
No, other than a lot of work went into this, and we waited some time for the records board to respond to us. And we anticipate if this passes that we will be embarking on quite a training with probably all departments of the city, so that we know what records they currently keep and make sure they understand which ones they can destroy and what they do if they destroy them. And we've got lots of paper storage all over City Hall that we are all anxious to go through and make sure that we keep or preserve properly and maintain according to our new schedule. So we haven't touched anything, but we will be embarking on that this current year if this passes. Thank you.
All right. It looks like, is this, we didn't, a motion to approve yet. Alder Killian, are you motioning to approve, or are you...
I'm sorry, I had a question, but I'll throw in the motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All right. We have a motion by Alder Watson and a second by Alder Denny. Alder Killian, you may speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question for Ms. Jacobson. So there's all the neat microfilm and stuff in the basement of older records and so forth. Will all of that be maintained, or will this change anything on very dated records such as those?
I would doubt that it would change that, but I'm not fully up to speed in reviewing all of these changes yet either, since they've just been implemented. But we're, no, I don't think we're going to destroy anything that's permanently down there as microfished or anything like that. If we do, there's procedures that have to be followed.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Looks like we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All righty. Thank you. We are now on to file number 02-0432. It's an ordinance amending chapter 2.16 Standing Rules of the Common Council, Rule 13, Committees, Section 2.60.010 Boards and Commissions enumerated, appoint, and section 2.74.020 Objectives of the Department and repealing section 2.60.250 Legislative Committee. I would entertain a motion. I have a motion by Alder Herbst and a second by Alder Watson. Any discussion? I think we're ready.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right. Thank you. We are now on to file number 0200432. Ordinance amending chapter 2.16 Standing Rules of the Common Council, Rule 2, Quorum Required, and Rule 4, Absence of Members, and Rule 5, Order of Business. Is there anything you wanted to highlight on this? City Attorney.
Just that Alder Watson, I believe, asked at the last meeting of the term, do we have to do anything with these rules now that our remote technology option is going away? And I said, no, they sunset. However, this gets to be very complicated. When we went back to look, we don't report temporary changes, I don't believe, to Munich Code, and they also do not keep track of sunset dates. And so this change you made, the temporary one between February 1st and April 19th, probably wasn't even reported to them. So when that went away and we struck that language, we were left with the version of these two rules, Rule 2 and 4, that you passed on January 11th. So you made two changes to these two rules, one on January 11th and one on February 1st. So when we went back and took away the version from Feb. 1 and looked at what we had just prior to that date that you passed on the 11th, we still had some work to do to clean it up. So I apologize, this is after the fact, to make sure that we get rid of those options and that we affect the desire of the council here, and we have to keep a straight record with our code service that manages these codifications for us. So that's, this is cleanup.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Alder McAlany and a second by Alder Martins. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. And just a clarification then for us and for the public. This then is still, WebEx is still gone, right? WebEx is not coming back. We appear in person to do our business. Is that where we're at?
Absolutely correct.
Because I think when you go to read some of this in the packet, it's a little confusing for people that watch what we're doing.
Yep. And that's why I compared the two rules, the two versions, but you're right, people listening and watching can't hear that.
Right. So no virtual attendance for us.
That's correct.
Thank you.
May I make one more comment, Mayor?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry. We also added to Rule 5, which is new this meeting, an item in your Order of Business is number 11. When you added the ability for two Alders to request a special meeting of the committee of the whole of the council, we wondered how that would get on a council agenda, because usually we put things on there by ordinance or resolution, and it wouldn't be coming through another committee necessarily. So just trying to give effect to how that would happen, we added an item, Order of Business under Rule 5 to say, you know, that when it happens, it won't appear on there on every agenda, but when it happens, you'll see on the, in that Order of Business, an Alder person requests to call for a meeting of the entire council as a committee of the whole, and their written request should be contained in the packet that will identify the two Alders requesting it in writing with the subject matter. And that will guide how we put it on the agenda then, so it meets open meeting law. So that's how that will work. Thank you.
All right. I think we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right. Thank you. We are now on to our final public comment and suggestions. I see all staff in the audience and no people, so I'm going to assume nobody has anything. You are people. No non-staff folk. All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
You can enter it in here. Oh, I got press discuss. Now you can enter it.
We have a motion by Watson and a second by Larson. All of those in favor can signify by voting, I guess?
No, this is a voice vote.
Oh, it's a voice vote. Any opposed? All right. Thank you.
So then it prompts...